All right, whenever you're ready.
Oh, meeting order. First, budget is health administration. Bill. He's not gonna be here, but he dropped off his budget sheet. Anybody see any problem with it?
Well, that'd raise the money percent, but. Does he play the help, the higher health?
No, no, there's no deputy.
He didn't say he didn't, he wasn't planning on having a deputy.
We'll see the deputies.
They became on both jobs. So we can zero that out.
Yeah. Did he, did he mention what he might need for equipment?
I know he had mentioned in the past, he used that line item for like a camera, but he didn't specifically state. What he would use for the equipment. I don't know if it's more if he had to get something in regards to like. And one of the examples he uses is getting my foods if he needed to go into.
Yeah.
A place.
We've got some masks and gloves and. I bet suits, I thought.
Oh, I'm unaware of that.
Yeah. I just didn't know, maybe he said.
And then the one he added for association dues, that is to pay for trainings. He mentioned to me, so if you look at where training is and you see nothing there, and then association dues added. He did mention to me that that pays for training.
So was it dues or is it training?
I think it's association dues and within that association.
He can get trained.
Yeah.
Pretty famous, okay.
I don't see.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
All right, make a motion for forty four eleven health administration. In the amount of four thousand fifty dollars. All in favor? Hi. Next one is. General assistance. We've been holding pretty steady in that twelve thousand dollars figure, so. I don't. I don't see anything to change.
Well, she's spent so far this year, one thousand five seventy nine.
Yeah.
In the cold months where. Things may start to change, getting the prices and doing, getting through.
They've been holding twelve thousand for quite a few years.
Right.
Three years now.
At least, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been under the last three years.
Yeah. It was very same. Didn't put anything down in there, right?
No, because we usually do that. But, yeah, I. I agree, we've been pretty fortunate with twelve grands in carriers.
So. On the budget for that administration assistance, this year she's been taking. Administration vote soon.
Yeah, and we talked about the.
Two thousand bucks.
About the administration, and then we talked about that, right? Yeah.
So should we put a line item in there with the administration is going to be how much?
I. I don't think it's necessary. I mean, if she breaks it out, Michelle breaks it out to actual assistance and. You see a need to break it out?
Budget committee never had a need to break it out before.
Yeah.
They do all just because.
I think Michelle, they just do it on their own. I don't.
Yeah, they, they do it on a budget tag.
Yeah.
But we never required it on the budget, the budget created it. Obviously, you guys can if you want.
Yeah, yeah.
But it'd take about six hundred bucks a month.
Yeah.
Hey.
More than what it's. More accurate now than it's ever been.
Darn it.
I mean, it's always been, it's always been charged, we know it's always been charged, but it's always been grouped in, but now the budget tax will split it out so you can see it. See how much it affects the overhead.
So I don't see. I think if they just keep it going the way it is, it'd be fine. I mean, Michelle breaks it out. We just appropriate our amount if we have to ask. I agree. So.
I think we have a better handle on it now than the beginning of the year, so.
I agree.
We have a pretty good understanding and.
I'll make a motion to approve twelve thousand dollars for forty four forty two general assistance.
Seven.
Moved in second in all favor?
Hi.
All right.
One question, does she get her bonus?
She did.
Just got it, right?
Yeah, yesterday around.
Let's start with advertising and dues. Speaking of dues, did we get to the bottom of the Laotian planning commission? Rather than off that, I wish it to the proper accounting, not. Our dues for.
I'll check. I, I don't think I checked on it. We were in a bunch.
Remember last Tuesday, we, we did the manifest, we did the budget for. Planning board.
Mm-hmm.
And the budget versus the actual showed that, well, one way to find out, so what.
Can't remember if I did. I remember you saying it now, and I'm wondering if I, I brought it up. That thirteen, is it the thirteen hundred? No.
Yes.
Yeah. It does not look like it's all, we'll get that off situation, it's like.
So far, out of the thirty five hundred, we spent twenty one. Yeah, I see no reason to change it. I'm gonna make the motion forty one ninety seven advertising dues to thirty five hundred.
Sorry.
Move in second in all favor?
Hi.
Payroll expenses. Another big one. Can you? Enlighten us on my own gun?
My sure as ten.
Okay.
So, um, I was waiting for this. I haven't already done everything. Um, so what it is, is. The retirement percentage for the police decreased. It went to thirty one point twenty eight percent. Um, did it based off the projected three percent increase in salary? Um, for. The admin assistant percentage that decreased as well, but it went to thirteen point five, uh, point fifty three percent. So taking the projected salaries, multiplying percentages. Um, got the total for both. So including both policemen, myself, that retirement is at forty nine thousand four hundred sixty four eighty two. For, um. The FICA. Um, that included all salaries, um, all salaries were. If we did based on a three percent increase, the whole total was seven hundred eleven thousand six hundred three dollars and seventy cents. Um, the FICA percentage was seven point sixty five, which got the total of fifty four thousand four hundred thirty seven dollars and sixty eight cents.
Very good.
Did you take any consideration for the town part? This show raised?
I did not. So I don't know if we wanna.
Yeah, I got a.
Possibly bump it up a little bit, but I did not include.
Suggestion. Well, to a hundred and four point five.
Okay, recover six hundred.
Making.
Three percent.
That was projected increases. For salary. Yeah, so you take the salary.
Total salary.
Total salary, and all for the total.
Well, you put a three percent based on the overall percentage of the increase.
Yeah. Um.
Well, there's one town purpose. Well, highly increases. Wait, though.
I wanted, I wanted to see why not for six hundred.
Your overall amount that you, your overall amount that you approve not. Because right now you're below the overall amount of the three percent. Of your total salary.
Even with it.
Even with the tax code, then they just. You're below that.
They keep track of it.
Oh, yeah. So this is what you're projecting is your overall salary.
This is, yes.
With the three percent increase.
Yes, this is projecting with every employee having.
Yeah, the only thing I don't have in here is a fire, which we must have some idea on that, the police, and. Now I've got forty one thirty, I didn't have that in there. And I think we still had enough in there that even with those three percent ratings on them, it'll be rated above the total overall three percent increase.
So you don't feel, when the safety in there for six hundred bucks, it probably.
I'm fine with whatever you guys want to do, whatever you.
I mean, safety would probably be good as well, too, not, no one I want. To come out from the other budgets.
I would feel comfortable with that.
One oh four five?
Get rid of the pennies, is my question.
Yeah. I wouldn't say one oh four. I was gonna say one oh four.
One oh four five hundred.
One oh four five hundred? What do you think, Chris? Do we do that?
Yep. What do you want to put down for each line item?
Oh.
No. Good question.
Why don't you take that three hundred each one?
Yeah.
Fifty four, seventy seven.
Four hundred.
Probably, yes. Minus two thousand fifty percent.
You add the three hundred each one?
Well, I can't because, uh.
Get rid of the page, I mean.
Three hundred one dollar twenty five cents.
Well, because I gotta put these amounts in for the budget sheet, so I don't want to know what you want for each line item, you know, I mean, not the overall. Overall. Do you want to just get rid of the pennies on both of them with three hundred and extra for each one?
Yep.
That will you.
Yeah, right.
I see that, that just had to.
So it will be forty nine.
Seven sixty four. And fifty four, seven thirty seven?
No.
Is that right?
Oh, seven sixty four, yes.
Mm-hmm.
And fifty, what was the second one? Fifty five?
Forty nine thousand seven hundred and sixty four dollars even. And fifty four thousand seven hundred and thirty seven dollars even.
Thank you.
That should come up to a hundred and four five.
Well, it doesn't.
No. One oh four, five oh one.
Yeah.
That one.
You good for that?
Yep.
I'm good with that.
All right, to make the motion for. Forty one fifty five payroll expenses, the amount of one oh, hundred and four thousand five hundred and one dollars. Second, move this second in all favor?
Hi.
And next one is insurance.
Primax and then.
This is Primax and Health Doc.
Yeah. And this.
Forty one ninety six.
Another one with entries.
There you go.
The reason for health charts was a couple cases there.
So this is what happened. The health insurance did increase by fifteen point six percent. Um. So.
Projected.
The projected what?
The projected increase.
Oh, yes.
Well, no.
Um. So.
It's, it's published, Chris.
Oh, yeah, no, the fifteen point six is the definite. Um. So. The two that, um, currently have. Um. Single plans does total up to twenty six thousand nine hundred thirty six dollars and six cents. And, um, one with family at thirty six thousand three hundred sixty three sixty. Made that total for that first line item health insurance at sixty three thousand. I mean, we could do three hundred if you want to get rid of, get rid of the pennies, but.
Yes, I agree, I'd like to do that.
So let's make that sixty three three.
Okay, when you get the, the liability and workers' comp, if ours, uh, in the short term.
So the liability, workman's comp, and unemployment came from, uh, Primax. So Primax had sent out their rate packages.
Did they give a percent from it?
They did. So, um, workman's compensation did increase by twenty five point one percent. Um, they have the total amount as eleven thousand six hundred eighty nine dollars even. Property and liability increased by nine percent. Uh, making the total amount of twenty four, if I'm going too fast, I'm sorry, um, twenty four thousand three hundred and four dollars even. Um, employment decreased by six point four percent. Um, annual amount on that would be. I added an extra number. One thousand, um, nine hundred, I want to say seventy two dollars. Um, making it a total of thirty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty five even. No pennies on that one.
So you said the liability went up.
What, liability, property and liability went up nine percent.
Nine percent?
And then unemployment decreased by six point four.
Okay, I had it going down fourteen.
For which one? The property and liability?
No, I'm going with the other one.
Oh, okay.
I'm fine with that, and it's just stuff that I was looking at, so. I had short-term disability, there is no increase.
Well, so the short-term disability is different. Well, the short-term, um, disability, long-term, uh. Disability and life, um, the short-term rates did go up by a penny. So it was, uh, last year it was twenty six cents. Um, and then twenty twenty four, it's at twenty seven cents. So that has a maximum of a thousand dollars. Um. So. Uh, the whole formula itself is, um, you take that thousand dollars, um, divided by. Oh, what am I right here? Divided by ten, um. But you get the hundred, but then you take that a hundred times the rate, so the twenty seven, which equals the twenty seven. Then you have three full-time employees, so you took that twenty seven times three, which you get, um, the eighty one dollars for the short, short-term itself. Then you'll have life, which life, um, and AD, AND went down. So the life rate was originally eighteen cents last year, and it decreased this time to fifteen cents. AND number did stay the same rate at two cents. Um, kind of some same scenario with the, um, formulas, that together with, um. The three employees. I'm trying to read my notes here. Came altogether at four dollars and twenty five cents. And then long-term disability, you have the twenty twenty three rate, which was fifty seven cents, twenty twenty four decreased to forty eight cents. Um, same formula, similarity of three full-time employees, that came to seventy two. Um, altogether for an annual amount that you're looking at one thousand eight hundred eighty seven.
So that is a thousand dollars, Chris. You're doing it based on the employee most, that whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's off of, um.
The three current employees.
The three current employees, you got it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
You do have questions?
No, if you have any questions, I have all the grades, we're from health trust right here.
Yeah.
Let's see, so we're good, uh, thirty seven, nine sixty five, the liability and workers' comp?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be one oh three.
And then the eighteen eighty seven is good?
Yep.
And what is it?
Um.
The short-term and long-term disability is eighteen eighty seven?
One oh three, one hundred three thousand, one fifty two.
Fifty two?
There it ends.
So we make a motion to. For forty one ninety six insurance in the amount of a hundred and three thousand one hundred and fifty two dollars.
Second.
Moved in second in all favor?
Hi.
All right.
Bye.
Next one is municipal buildings. This one went down by six hundred.
Four hundred.
I mean.
If I'm looking at that right.
Six hundred, seventy five, six, and seventy five.
Seven thousand.
Oh, thousand six.
Thousand, yeah, sixteen hundred.
I can see a thousand in the, uh. In the electric, and the other six was heating and fuel. I don't know. With the war going on and everything, I don't know, is, we want to cut the heating and fuel down. And we stand in that. You know. Uh, we still got a few months, and we're in fifty five hundred under.
Honey, you remember when we budgeted that? That was, we were at the higher ends of the.
Yeah, we're.
Of, of the price per gallon. Now we're obviously no set, and we get quite a bit of flipping.
Yeah, but that price can change.
Yeah, I would say don't reduce it.
No.
Keep it at the same prices that we had.
Yeah.
Created last.
What I'm saying, I wouldn't want to reduce it. Electricity maybe, because we're in the co-op. Uh. That saves us a little bit.
We were waiting to see if we could have saved on that before we made an adjustment, if you remember.
Yeah.
And you want to put it back at fifteen point six?
So right now, we're sixty eight hundred dollars under on electricity.
Well, I'm talking about the heating.
Yeah, I, I want to put that.
The.
Back to fifteen six. You know, electricity, I. I think would be good at fifty.
So salaries. So it's, uh. Almost four thousand five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, we still got a few months, because.
Yeah.
We paid Brad out of that for the shovel.
Yeah, shovel is it. Well, bottom figures, and by.
Maintenance and supplies were. Went way under. Twenty thousand on the budget on maintenance and supplies and equipment.
So let's see, what are you buying for the equipment for, except snowblowers and stuff like that?
Yeah, but. New shovels.
Boots, buy them boots, you know, it was all the equipment, anything they need on transport station.
But sell them.
Well, the transfer station stuff.
I don't think.
That goes underneath that. So just more of a rag and stuff, right? This, uh.
Um.
Oh, amazing.
Would you change his boots when he comes here to show them?
No.
No.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Why it's so high?
Yeah.
No, we were getting that out of there. That wasn't coming on the transport station, but I have to go back and look at that. I think that was coming out of this, any municipal building.
Take all of that. That's.
Everything is coming out of this municipal, but let me go back and look at the. Transport thing.
Uh, forty three twenty four? One three?
What's that?
Forty three twenty five? Supplies. Would assume that's what you're.
Yeah, I think that's where the boots come out of.
There are the vests.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, that would make sense, since.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Looks that's way in the budget, too, so.
Why we got ten thousand bucks there?
Ten, twenty, right?
Uh, for salaries, ten thousand.
All right.
Oh, it's good, it's thirty five, two.
The, uh. Or the janitor or the shovel and. Not likely for a custodian.
Yeah, it'd be more, yeah, and prepare something, I want to need buildings like a door. Door on one of your regular buildings, municipal buildings, to pay for a door on it. I think we have done that recently.
From this, uh.
So.
From this line item for forty one ninety four.
So theoretically, could we have used, or could we use? The Lordville Fire Station purchase of that door out of that?
Yeah.
Theoretically, municipal building.
Yeah, municipal.
Yes. Definitely. Take care of one of our municipal buildings. However, you guys see thirty using that thirty five. That's been a pretty solid number that we've had over the years, so if I keep, if we do have a trust on that, I'll remind you that we put money in just in case a boiler goes or something like that.
Yeah, I just wondered why we can't cut it that, thirty five thousand seems like a lot.
But we had.
I still got twenty thousand.
God, what the pigs have over there?
Yeah, no, there's no reason you can't, I mean, we have been going over it. It's just an amount that we settled, you have the trust on the end.
Here's my question. Would the mini splits be under that?
It could be.
Mini splits?
Yeah, they would be, but we opted to hold off until next year, because that was a pretty large finisher.
Yeah, but that's why I'm saying for like next year.
Just let it utilize it for next year.
That thirty five, if that's going to be included, if you want to still have wiggle room, if you do go forth with mini splits.
You can use this.
Any of the options in mini splits?
There are three different, um, bid options. I know there's one for twenty two, I believe there's one for almost ten and.
Yeah, they're really around twelve. One, I think we go to three around twelve, right?
I agree.
That'd be a good reason to leave it in, if you know you got that big expenditure coming in.
And I think the fire chief said something about door repair, right?
He did.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we leave it then, and have that cushion for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
So seventy five, six?
Correct.
Yeah. Right, so make a motion, forty one ninety four municipal buildings for seventy four, I mean, seventy five thousand six hundred.
Second.
Move in second in all favor?
Hi.
All right. And the last one is executive, forty one thirty executives.
So basically, three percent.
So, uh, so those actually, we did as five percent, um. And, I mean, I kind of went based off, you know, um, Alan's. Way of how we presented it, and, um, I thought that was very. Informative as well, so I went based off five percent for all three.
Ah, I don't see a five percent, this, this one.
Well, you know, mine too. I, I see it as the same for each year, so I didn't, I mean, I would, you're more than welcome to.
I want to be asked you guys if you're gonna do this, so. So I won't be beaten and dead horse at the budget committee, and you're gonna still stick with the thirty nine thirteen rule? You don't have to adjust it all, adjust it at the budget committee if you want. But right now, that's, and I went back and researched what I had their info, based on what Chris asked last time. And. My old records led me to believe Claudia and the office afterwards, Brian. That we didn't have enough personnel to go back and prorate FICA, retirement insurance, and. And we just didn't have the office help to go back and do all that for the thirteen weeks. Go back and prorate that if it got approved at town meeting. So that's why we kept it. Goes April to April, the fires are ages.
Right.
Uh, I'm just telling you why, so. I mean. I can go back and prorate them and have.
I mean, it averages out the same.
Ben, well, on your budget, you wouldn't, you would, you would be reducing your budget. Like your tax collector budget that you submitted improved if you went to thirty nine thirteen, we dropped that off.
Yeah. Right. But I mean, it's. They're gonna get same month. But compared to Perry, you're only doing it for nine months and not doing it for twelve months.
But thirteen thirty nine. Well, if you won't help fix it for the thirteen thirty nine.
We'll stay to that rule.
Okay. I can't see the office being able to help us. Prorate all that stuff right now.
I had a issue with the salary assessment. I don't think it deserves a five percent raise. Yeah, okay, three.
You figured five on that?
I figured five on all of three, yes.
That's, that's basically David, correct?
I, yes, if I can do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, all right?
What's three percent?
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna do it first.
So, um. This is my shop steward union hat. It's a position, not the person, so we have to remember we're talking about a position and not. An individual.
Well, disagree with you on that. I mean, that a lot of.
Well, we can't.
This is not a game in here.
I, no, 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 no. I know, I know that. That's not what I said. I said, I'm just, I'm just my, my own thought process. I'm just playing my thought process and. You know. It's, I constantly have to remind myself that we're talking about a position, not a person. It's much like the conversation that we had. About the town for tax collector's office and the deputy and um. Their positions, you don't want to bite your nose off to spite your face. I, I, I do get that if we're going across the board and I think. The initial budget conversations from the onset were. Three percent is what everybody was kind of the mindset everybody was thinking and that we are having a conversation about five, but. Um, it's a position, not the person, so. And when we have an open conversation, because we are being videotaped. We have to. Use caution not to. Make comments towards an employee, so. Or mention not the person.
I wasn't mentioning anything against David. I was just saying is that David? This, the assessing.
Yes, yeah, I, yeah.
Just one clarification. That was all, nothing against. David.
I mean, I look at it for the interesting, but my, compared to past, basically, your management gives you. Some of the money, because you gotta work with your employees. Based on their performance for a year and all that stuff. That's, you distribute it out, that money. Based on that. Based on this position. Um, I feel it's three percent.
I mean, I mean, you go. Look, the transfer station, that's a position. You know, when we're giving them guys three percent. And they're probably paid. Less than what they should be paid.
I, I feel what they are. I agree.
But I mean, uh. For what that position entails right now. Uh, I kind of agree with Leo, three percent is plenty.
Yeah.
So it comes out to nineteen thousand. Fifteen ninety dollars and twelve cents.
Nineteen what?
Nineteen thousand. Zero five nine point one two four.
So make it nineteen.
Sixty.
Sixty, oh, so, so.
Good with everything else?
Back to town, we fought pretty close last year, but. Twelve hundred should be able, should be able to cover it.
We could, we could, we could go up this year.
No. If we, if they do, we'll probably be minimal. And I think there's enough. Wiggle room and the rest of the stuff. Probably overall.
And the office, uh, and the office equipment and supplies and postage. Those aren't tremendously large increases and we encompassed. All except for the land use boards, budgets for those things. Is that enough to cover?
See, I was, I, when we were doing this, I was unsure if we were including that in there. So I put. Kind of based on what it is, but I. Kind of was waiting to see what you would say about that specific one. Um, because I wasn't really sure how much I should be figuring out for. The additions that will be coming.
I think the.
I know right now.
Land use boards have a postage line.
Yes, I said, with the exception of the land use board.
With the exception.
We did deduct and, and. You know, you take my conservation commission. Historic district commission, we all told them, I think the library, no, library was in their own.
Right.
Um, we. Didn't approve their postage and or supplies because we directed that everything would come through. Is that correct, David? Am I correct in that, right?
We did the postage to the office.
Right.
For them, but. Fire supplies, they wanted to keep their supplies in.
All the, all the boards except for ours.
Conservation, retard in conservation.
Uh, just anything but land use boards. I'm just wondering if two years, two doll, two hundred dollars is enough.
Yeah, I think you, you've, uh, with everything that's been transferred over, with the current budget dashboard, it's still under by two point seven. So. I looked at it from the point, um, paying Chris. Leo was. The percentage that we would know that the post office is going up and that's gonna cover it. That's gonna cover it for what, who is assigned? And then, you know, considering we're under right now, but two hundred twenty seven, we went up another two hundred.
So we should be good.
I think it's a little better than what the post increases should be good.
Uh, back, back to the office, when there were a thousand bucks, almost a thousand bucks over. So far this year. Well, Susan, Brandon.
Well, you bought a laptop. We bought a cell phone.
Yeah, that's true.
Cans.
Yeah, so that's. The cell phone is not included in this yet.
Okay.
So we haven't gotten that bill as of yet. Um, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a lot. I got the phone for free. So, um.
Well, then it should, it shouldn't be a lot.
Well, exactly, um. But the computer.
You get out of store with it without getting caught. That's pretty good.
Stealing it over.
I don't know, I think the laptop may have went under computer.
Office equipment.
Well, that's what I meant.
That would be. Computer.
Because computer is a separate line item.
I think you put that on the office equipment, Audrey did, when we bought a, a computer. This year.
Oh.
We bought another one, though.
A laptop for.
I know she's got one under there. I mean, she bought.
Yeah, that one right there she bought.
Yeah, I think the laptop for general assistance. I'm wondering, I'm assuming Michelle put it under computer. Um, I'm not a very sure. I can definitely double check that, but that's what my assumption would be.
We bought new, what about air conditioners? Where did those come from? Because we bought new air conditioners this year too.
No, come on, no, I, I, would that be office supplies?
Oh, no, the municipal building.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, I should have. Something lying off my hands.
Would all the cheaters that were bought, be five of that?
Yes.
Oh, office equipment. How, you got four of them, right, wasn't it?
Uh, there's one.
There's five.
Five.
Five of them?
Yeah.
So we're pretty good for next year as far as staying with the budget. For next year.
I'm guessing these, these must have been bought before I. Come into office.
Yeah, I mean, do we, certainly any more additional buying in next year additional.
I mean, I think pretty much a lot of things are up to date. Um. I mean. I don't see any. Big purchases, knock on wood, for, you know. Um, anything other office equipment, other than, you know, our necessary needs, which would be. Envelopes or paper or.
Okay.
It's tough, it's, it's tough for me to answer only because we're. I haven't been here and it's been for a while. I don't know. What, if it would be an increase, the same or the day. Um. Um. I'm just saying, because like planning. Has been, I'm more legal stuff. Budget. I think, well, I think, um, if I'm correct, planning has their own. Because they're on land use. So I'm assuming they have their own. I have to look, hold on, I'm sorry.
Website entry, are you gonna? It's. Teresa gonna show you that?
I reached out to her again to ask her, see if she'd come in tomorrow or Thursday. Um, I know she had said she. Wants to come in. I just don't know if her schedule may not be allowing her to make it. But I am definitely still trying to get her. To come in and show me. Planning would just have their own line and process that never flies.
I would like to. I think it's sufficient amount. But I'm just, I am curious along with Leo, why? That office equipment was overspent by a thousand dollars.
You should have all the information inside there. While like, well, it's charged back.
I'm sure we do.
Yeah.
Um. I know Michelle has been. The one who's been doing most of billing and stuff. Um. I, I, I personally do not know why it's, I don't know if something may have gotten put there where it shouldn't have been. But for example, if this computer's on there, I don't feel like it should be in there. I feel like it should be under the computer line, which is something definitely we could. If it is, Michelle, I could probably look at it and. Get it to the right line if possible.
I think so, it knows. Was bought.
But a chair or probably one. Or by the buck to you.
They're lazy boys.
I would say I definitely probably see being lazy.
The cabinets you bought were cheap. And Audrey came and asked them. We do the cabinets.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know those are cheap.
Where? In the kitchen?
The office.
Yeah.
Then that one.
Hmm.
They buy that one.
And I know one of the computers landed underneath that line because there was extra money left in it. She came to. The slideboard to ask the line on the computer and gave her office agent to do it.
Yeah.
And then I know she put it under that line.
This is either.
Yeah.
I feel like it should have been under computer.
But that may have been why it's over. I mean, that, that would easily justify it more over.
Yeah. Because we're not talking, you're not talking about laptop, right? You're talking about a desktop.
So I thought it was a laptop.
Because I know that was bought since I took off, but I, I. I mean, it's, it's all coming from the same, but just, I was just curious.
I can definitely, Michelle's off tomorrow, but Thursday, we, her and I can sit down, look into it. And see if it is a computer means.
We're just making whatever they verify.
Yeah, it's not.
Oh, I see. One sixty eight. And forty million.
Double check that later.
Yeah, yeah, please.
The one sixty eight already.
Wow, we're doing three percent on one line.
You went the nineteen oh sixty, right?
Yeah.
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 There's three hundred seventy dollars less, right?
And three thirty percent. Four, that's what they're reaching.
Sixty eight, eight oh nine.
Oh, yeah, nineteen dollars, so. Anything else?
Nope.
No. It's not one six seven, it's one six nine, one seven nine, Vicki.
No, that, the twenty twenty three.
Yeah.
But.
And add the, and minus eighteen time before and add nineteen oh six, oh, right?
No, you just take the nineteen four thirty request and. Subtracting nineteen oh sixty and you'll come up with a three hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay, alright.
And then you subtract it from what's under the twenty point four total.
Okay. Alright.
Once you.
Oh, not yet.
Okay. And we do also have one thing on Zoom from up there just then.
Somebody's on Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh.
Um.
Once it's the only.
Julie, skip tabs on me.
There you go, man.
Eight oh nine.
You guys set?
Yeah.
I am.
Okay, I'll make a motion forty one thirty for executive in the amount of. Hundred and sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favors?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do you have any questions?
More clarification, so before we go on through it. Um, she just wants to know, did she hear correctly that transfer station and assets are at three percent and everyone else five percent?
No, she didn't hear correctly.
Would you like to? Would you like to clarify for her if? It was different?
Yeah, we'll clarify. That's not right.
She also said she likes to be an involved citizen.
Oh.
Wow.
No.
So, what's the explanation?
No, she's wrong. She didn't hear that. It's not right. That was your. Estimation of the.
Yeah, that was my projected per insurance of like a.
But I mean, five percent, three percent. That was, uh. Just two people, two. Two percent, two people, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's some new speakers with it.
Well, it was work, I was wondering if anyone was gonna show up. Feel bad.
She, she got it right.
She, um, the two positions, so. Uh, the two positions were. Myself. And then Michelle, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so footkeeper and administrative assistant.
Five percent on five percent.
Yes. I think that's, she said the two positions, so. He said, thank you.
Okay. Well, you're gonna get it when you get it.
That could be a good thing.
It wasn't everybody.
I have. That was it. That's all we had scheduled, so.
They've done this.
I just, um, can I bring up an emergency thing we had last night? Had a phone call, couple of phone calls. I get emails too. I never looked at my email last night. Apologize for anybody that sent me an email, but I was receiving texts and phone calls. Uh, and emails to my direct email. Um. We had a sinkhole, culvert failure on Hobbs Road just past. Um. The, uh, first normal school. Uh, old metal culvert, twelve inch culvert. Got a hole through it right in the middle of the center line. The, uh. Road opened up. Was probably a sixteen inch hole on top, but it combed down, was probably. Greater than four feet diameter in the center of the road, just down probably six or seven inches. Ribboned it all off, called Bronn. He called me back. Unfortunately, we didn't have any twelve inch culverts. I know we don't have the one budget thing, but it was an emergency. So it had to be dealt with, so, um. So it had to be dealt with, so, um.
Ron, that one?
No, we had, they had to go get twelve inch COVIDs at, um. Water Industries, which is kind of a shame, cause I was at Water Industries getting twenty four inch COVID, just that could pick them up all over there, but. Uh, would have saved up labor and the. Sending somebody down there, I mean, obviously, they have to pay their staff members to.
Set down a leak?
I'm sorry, oh, oh, just past Yon traffic, they're home twenty eight. Um. So anyway, they, uh, to get it fixed, so. They're working on it today, that's the, the hole on top.
They put all the covers?
Yeah, they had one called.
The one by, uh.
Just past.
Irene?
Yeah, just past Irene, it's actually, um, just, just the own. Formerly was, um.
I think it was the one that Irene, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's just a twelve inch cross collar, um, there was water flowing through it, um, my estimation is. Um, with all of that rain, we got Saturday, Friday and Saturday and so forth, it just kept undermining, kept falling in, you know? And was bubbling up, cause there was water flowing through it still. But, um.
That's funny, this is right two, two day yesterday.
Yeah.
Lawrence Nightbolt, even one of us, I never saw that.
Yeah. It was, uh, I don't know if I.
So we were up to Wood and Summit area, it's.
I get another text.
Yeah, I see, I haven't struck one in yet, and I, yes, we must start.
So we did, uh, and it's, uh, just, just so you know, Caitlin, just for, uh, future reference, it's Kinsler, Kinsler with an R on the end. You said, yeah.
Oh, I was trying to read the voicemail.
Yeah.
I think, may, it must have been cut off then, because it must have only had just that.
That's Tim and Gretchen, Kinsler. It was just past fifty three Hobbs Road. That's their address.
Yeah, I ended up calling.
There's a soft while, you see that they, somebody stuck. Yeah, sticks a nail, sap and whatever's soft, I mean, the road is probably wide, when I taped that all off last night. I cleaned the leaves, that way any bonus graphic would know that it was safe to drive over there, the road was solid, you know? Cause sometimes you get that.
Right.
Four, six, well, in that case fifteen feet of leaf. And duff on the dirt road, whatever, and you're kind of not sure if you can drive over there, whatever, so I raked it all off in a big half moon, so. The traffic would know for the night that it was good solid road there, so.
What might have happened is Jepson cutting on the town law, yeah? Maybe they took the road out. It, it's, I mean, uh, Lawrence Nightbolt, we've seen that.
Yeah, there's no, uh, there were no tire tracks, it's not like a, you know, dual wheel or something went through, it just slowly caved in. You know, but it would, like I said, it was toned, it was, it was, it was that big, I mean, I. Got down in the hole and I kept kicking rocks, trying to fill it in, and as fast as I could go my way. I said, well, it's beyond anything we, so I just marked it all with cones there and for the night and. Called Ron right away from there and he started making phone calls, whatever, and they get up there first thing this morning, so. But we didn't have any, the, the, the only call which we had at the transfer state, the smallest was eighteen inches and. Um, he said, I don't think you want eighteen, and then do you, and I said, no, that would, that'd be a little overkill, so. Um. There's something else.
Buddy, can I get coffee?
Yeah.
I was gonna ask you if you wanted them, you know, I take some, um, an extra for me, please.
Yeah, I'll leave the master on your chair.
Did you guys get the email on Champion Hill and the bus stop?
Yeah, um, gone days.
Yeah. Do you wanna address that? Do we have any issues with it? You get it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, was, was the plane, the plane, where the bus stop, where the kids pick up? Right now.
Lieutenant section of Jones Champion Island Townhouse Road.
Was it blocked or?
I mean, it, at, at times, when you're coming home at night and they're all there, you know, if you get three or four vehicles there. You know, they kind of encroaked out to break the edge of the traveling of Jones Road.
Right.
And you have to kind of stick out there to, to, to see, but it's.
We even contacted the transportation director of the school, had them come out.
Can you approach the people that are doing it?
That were to go park that. I mean, if they got the kids.
I, I've even tried to pull out, they pull so far out, I can't see.
Well, yeah, it used to be, it used to be when there was only two vehicles, but now there's, now there's three and sometimes four.
And they don't need to be right out that far. They're almost in the road.
Whatever, you put it behind their.
The bus could download Champion Hill Road.
No, no, it goes Jones Road.
Yeah, well, on thought, why don't we just put a sign up and say no, no parking beyond the sign? So, I mean, how many kids are on Champion Hill Road, did they get a five vehicle?
There's, there's four residents that have children left out. Yeah.
And then you got. Here you, there you do.
And, and, um. Davis's. And I actually contemplated, it's like, okay. Would it be better in a section if we talked to transportation instead of, instead of picking up on that, and can you pick up on the other end? But I don't think that that would.
That, yeah, so, you gotta pull out the look at, yeah.
You, you do, but I mean, it would, in, instead of looking by them, if they were all parked in the right hand side, but then. It would create a problem, you're coming down around the corner from Garcia's, you'd have to go out around them, and then you have a car coming off, so, it, it, it's no wind. It's a couple of times a, a day, again, we'll pass it on to PD and see if they see where the. Influx or the additional vehicle, if it's creating a problem, maybe they can go out there and they can address it and have the cars. Stop back a little bit sooner.
If they don't park beyond the sign, they can stay more on Champion Hill Road than on it.
Yeah. Let's see what the. Law enforcement has to say, right? Yeah. I went to the chat, where's the sign for the zoning officer out back?
You talking about zoning or supervisor checklist?
Supervisor checklist.
It's, so when you go through the kitchen here, go through that door, it's on the shelves that's on your left.
In the kitchen, the purse?
No, no, through the door. The utility room, yeah, so it's on the shelves on your left.
Okay. I couldn't find that thing, I came in here, I was gonna put it up and I'm like, where is that stupid sign? So I'm gonna take that out, put it in my truck before I leave there.
So, meeting one end.
Were you, were you gonna bring up the? Contract for the ambulance?
Oh, yeah. Contract ambulance. You want, yeah, I'm good. You want me to, you don't mind, Chris?
Uh, no, no. If I may just offer some advice.
Sure.
Make any comments or questions during the procedure, sir, and sweet, don't be long-winded. I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yep.
Camera's still on, so I can apologize to my fellow planning board members for forgetting about the sidewalk today. The first thing that I missed. I pride myself in being.
The camera's still on, so that'll be the point in the minute as well.
Both have a sidewalk, have a proposed subdivision today and at three o'clock.
Busy today?
Yeah, I spent all afternoon by myself cutting and shipping rush on Town Road for a widening project. Getting to that time of the year where we all have to start burning our vacation time, so we're trying to get a, keep full crews. So it become really easy in a couple of weeks, when over half the shop will empty out for.
I told Chris, uh, this, like. Chris gets some of his minutes. Then.
Did, did you wanna adjourn the meeting?
I think, I did.
No, no one, no one seconded, that's why.
Well, I didn't make a motion, I just ended it. I called it order, so. I'm ended it.
Aye.
Perfect.
So what are you saying about that?